All right, welcome everyone. Welcome to the public hearing. So the purpose tonight of the public hearing is to discuss changes to the planning board establishment ordinance, changes to the land use ordinance, section eleven size, and changes to the land use ordinance, section seven. So as I said, we'll call it the order. And Rocky, are we turning it over to you? Or are we going to turn it over to Jim?
I would turn it over to John because he's, he's the one that did the, they're the ones that did the ordinance.
So, John.
Okay, yeah, so we presented these proposed changes, I think, on two different occasions to the select board. And so we're here if anyone has any questions about them. The first one concerns the establishment ordinance that set up the planning board. First back in nineteen eighty-eight, I guess, but then that was amended nineteen ninety-two. And that ordinance was amended nineteen ninety-four, so twenty-eight years ago. Twenty-eight years has elapsed since then before. And we thought on the board that it'd be time to take a look at the establishment ordinance again for one particular reason. And in the process of doing that, we looked at the whole document and sort of typed it up and cleaned it up. For example, under the organization paragraph, when they first set it up, they set up staggered membership. And so they laid out one member was for one year, one member was for two years, one member was for three years. Well, that's been going on for forty years now. So the staggered nature of the appointments is already in place. We removed that whole paragraph. And then we thought too, that as regards the membership, there are five regular members and two alternate members. And we thought that the select board, when it appoints alternate members, it doesn't make them alternate number one, alternate number two, so that when we do have a member, a regular member, missing at one of our meetings, we don't have to guess which of the two alternates fills that spot. Alternate number one would, and if alternate number one were missing, then alternate number two. So it's just a housekeeping process. But the most substantive change to the establishment ordinance comes in the last paragraph in the organization. It has to do with a regular member who misses more than three meetings without just cause, for example, medical excuse. Obviously, it would be a justification for missing, for missing a meeting. And as it stood, the chairperson of the committee would write to the member who missed three meetings and inform that member, say, you have missed three meetings and therefore we're asking for your resignation. Period. But if the person does respond, then, you know, we're stuck in the war. Nothing, nothing happens. So we added a clause to the effect, and you can see it in bold if you have it before you, but I'll read it. "In the event that a member fails to respond to the chairperson within seven days or declines to resign, the planning board may recommend that municipal officers remove that member and fill the vacancy as set forth in a different section." So we're not stuck with the situation at the water. It happened that a member didn't show up for a fourth time, and it happened that two alters went there, and we didn't have a quorum. And remember, the Republican come to the planning board to do business. We had to say for the first time in the history of a planning board that we didn't have a quorum. So those are the two substantive changes. We changed the word chairman to chairperson. And finally, on the last page, we added a referencing conflict of interest. Conflict of interest, you should announce what that conflict of interest is. So that's that. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for John? So it was primarily those language cleanup and the the length of designation of the alternative or the
The alternatives, yeah, number one and number two. But the primary thing is if a person doesn't show up for three three meetings without a just, without a justifiable excuse, then we ask that person to resign. And if the person doesn't respond, which is what happened to us, we didn't get, it was going into a black hole. We didn't get any response. So we were hamstrung because what could we do? This language now gives future planning boards an option. If they don't hear back within seven days, then de facto, the individual has resigned.
Good.
Yeah.
Perfect. So And on the staggering, it's interesting that you say that. That's a good catch. A lot of people still do that over a period of time.
Yeah, yeah. So once it's set up, it just, it just goes by itself. So. Okay, the second, this refers to land ordinance, section eleven, which is a very long section. My printout includes two nine pages. There we, well, had new signs, you know, a lot of definitions of language around signs, but mostly we changed changed, deleted some information and added additional information regarding illumination of signs and lighting of signs. So and those are indicated in the copies that are on the website. Jim, you have to speak to signs and illumination.
Yeah, I think that if you look at the overall changes, it was not about removing the ability to light, but kind of directing how people were lighting. I think the only thing that was actually crossed out were the the internally lit signs. So those signs that are okay or clear and have the So it was really about making sure that it was smart lighting and directed at its purpose. So not so wasteful. I think that pretty much captures the changes we made there.
And the last proposal that we're bringing forward that do with outdoor lighting. And that's only a one-page document, section seventeen. And typed up some language, added some, some new language to it, mostly to direct lighting down, to shield lighting from its intended purpose. And its intended purpose is to illuminate sidewalk. We don't want an illuminating acre of ground around it or something like that. I'm exaggerating, but you know, to focus the lighting and to make the town more compliant with its the town's dark sky goals. Then we appended our whole series of definitions of the request to our code enforcement officer, so that he can find out the people with correlated color temperature, CCT is, or emergency lighting is, the fully shield means. So he has these definitions as he goes about it for he or she. Lighting?
I think the other thing I would add is that the town already has strong dark sky lighting physiology in the entry paragraph. So we made that a little bit more robust. It was already there, so it's great to see. And also bringing up the technical terms, because the technology has changed in enormous amount in the last ten, fifteen years. I mean, we've gone from incandescent to LEDs. And, you know, when you start talking wattage, it's, it's like Atlas and Orange. So really, the, you know, take a look at the the ordinance and make sure that the technical language was up to date, so that it would match what people are going into the stores to purchase. Because LEDs are a different beast. So I think that would probably be my overall comment on that piece.
Did we receive any comments or discussions or any pushback on any of this?
I haven't.
With the, when we put it out there, there was no concerns.
And in fact, you know, I would say that pretty much all, maybe John, you can confer, but I would say pretty much all of the new development projects that have come before the planning board of being proactive, even without that ordinance piece in there for the town, they're like, what can we do? How can we participate? The hospital, for example, hand and lumber, dockside, lakeside, they all wanted to participate in making sure that lighting is in effect. So that is great to see.
Any question?
What about lights that people have that currently don't need? Like I got, we got two on now that would need.
I think that this ordinance is to future lighting. I mean, we would love to have you changing lights out. I think you'd find them to save me a lot really too, but that would be all we need.
Question?
Any other questions? What else you got for us, John?
That's it. It's enough. Three things.
There's a lot of work there.
Actually, it is. We're like, you know, crossing the Ts, dotting the Is, all that. We live with historical research. Jim is a great resource for us in this whole life project.
So kudos to you and planning board.
Thank you.
I know this may be a bit premature. I know your work is ongoing. Any other updates that you're looking at at this point in time?
Not really. We need to do code enforcement officer, you may have got heard. So that's, that's the good thing on our agenda.
All right. Steve?
Will you be asking, I sit on the fields board, and will you be asking for this to be incorporated into a current comprehensive plan?
Yeah, not in, into our current land use ordinance. It'll update it, yeah.
I'm quite happy to think, Tom, which they never seen you, somebody's been doing the job. If anything comes to us, it's nice to know where we stand and where we're supposed to be. I haven't taken the time until just now, but I would think that I know you said it would be new signs. Emergency services and what I'm thinking of hospitals.
Exactly.
So that was going to be my question. Some of that can be annoying, but
Yeah.
Somebody coming at two thirty in the morning needs to know where the hospital is.
Oh, sure. And holiday decorations too, you know, that's exempt. All of that is exempt.
So lighting that is temporary in nature, so that you have a work site or a work project that can be lit, all those would be considered exempt.
Any other questions or comments? Mike, you have any, Rocky? And so we're looking for a recommendation. Is that?
This is, this is a public hearing. The next step is bring, change to town.
So, and do you want to form recommendations saying selecting of endorsements?
I think you have already. This is just a public hearing. The next step, it goes to, right. Ron San, is that correct?
That's correct, but I have forms that need to be filled out that go with these, saying that you're certifying what is on these the changes when it goes to town meetings. So that's, that is the process that you're okay.
So that, that will cover our endorsement?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Very good.
But I have forms that I need all of you to sign.
All right. All right. Is there anything else to come to give for us? So I can motion to adjourn. John, you have?
Six fifteen.
Okay. Six fifteen, oh, David. Thank you.
So we have almost fifteen minutes.
So unfortunately, we can't create a select board meeting. We have to wait until six thirty. So we'll have a short fifteen minute hiatus and we'll reconvene. Thank you. All righty, welcome everyone back and to the select, select board meeting. So anyone have any concerns at this point, well, hear them. If not, then I'm going to have to pay to a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, undegone, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Well, thank you. Welcome again. I just want to do the introduction for everyone for the minutes and so we can record minutes for the meeting. So we'll start with Richard.
Richard P.
Ron San.
Peter Murray.
Nick Pierce.
Burton Woodman.
John Contrary.
Margarita Contrary.
Greg Roy.
Pete Mason.
Ron San.
Okay, who do we have on Zoom?
Sheila Grant, the Eastern Gazette.
Welcome, Sheila.
Esther Island, Greenville resident.
Welcome, Esther. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move right along. Okay, so agenda item number two, any declaration of conflicts or potential conflicts for meeting tonight? Yep. Okay, hearing done. Move forward. Minutes from April twenty twenty-two's meeting, did everybody have a chance to review those? Any concerns or anything we need to note? If not, I'm going to have to move forward.
Can I just ask a question about the minutes? Because Kim Brady has emailed me a couple of times because she wants, does that, did that sound okay the way I had those in the minutes for Kelly's landing?
I thought it sounded all right.
If everything's okay, I just didn't know if you wanted something more indifferently or, or whatever. I'm just asking before I go ahead and email her those minutes.
Do you think it should be different?
No, no, I, I mean, I put in specifically what you guys wanted. So, but I didn't know if you wanted to change it or not. Did you think it was okay?
Sorry, if I'm concerned.
Yes, just, just so you know, after that, she emailed me. And I let her know that once the minutes were approved, I would email that.
Right. And that's, she emailed me again and asked, asked me. So I was making, I just want to make sure before you okay them and so I can send them. That's all.
The way I read it, it was word for word.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, no, I don't have the motion. So, or new second, all those in favor? Rocky, that's going to be four zero one out, staying because I wasn't at the meeting.
Oh, okay, yeah.
All righty, any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I have one of each.
Okay.
I would like to delete number six. You need to move that to the executive session. Discussion, discussion of confidential records, one MRSA, speech statute, four zero five, subsection six, subsection F.
Okay.
Do you think there's sessions or?
So for clarity in the minutes, we make sure that Rocky just gets it. Okay.
He just has it.
Okay.
That's all I have.
So we're going to delete number six, which is shared in scholarship applications and add an executive session.
Correct.
What number do you add in it?
Do you say one?
To what number? Eleven A?
Eleven A, okay.
Motion to approve the addition of demolition.
Richard, motion?
Second.
Where? Second, AM discussion. On favor, five zero, Rocky? Okay, airport lease transfer approval and signature.
So we have another request for a hangar, a hangar lease transfer. You have that here. Look at first picture, two lines, then a paragraph. That's, that's the transfer.
Okay.
If you want to just mention the transfer or the background.
Okay. All right, town Greenville Airport lease agreement. This airport lease agreement is between the town of Greenville and Richard Lucent Junior and David Rogers for private hangar use. This indenture of lease made as of first January two thousand nineteen by the town of Greenville, the town and Lucent Rogers of Greenville, the Elysee will, with a mailing address of sixteen twenty-one Greenville, request transfer of land lease to Bravo and Bravo LLC and members Ronald F. Barrio and Michelle Barrio of twenty-five West Point, Greenville, Maine. This lease and asset transfer agreement is made as of the first day of June twenty twenty-two by Richard Lucent Junior and David Rogers and the assignment of the lease to Bravo and Bravo LLC and members Ronald F. Barrio and Michelle Barrio, now referred to as Elisee. Also, this private hangar use agreement is now changed to a commercial use agreement. Does everybody understand that, what we're doing? They're going to be transferring a private to a commercial lease. That certainly will change the rate. And anything else? We've got to look at it. It looks like the lease is paid today. So is there any discussion or any questions?
So Mr. Barrio, Bravo, Bravo will be purchasing that hangar from the Mr. Lucent and Rogers.
Mr. Rogers, as of June first.
What kind of commercial? Is there a draft? I don't know. Would you specify? I don't know. It's going to be like some kind of business right there, or is it, it's not specified.
Which I heard of.
Have you had a question?
Which hangar? Which one is, which hangar is?
Lucent? If you went in by Josh Brown, Jack, would be the very first one. And then it's the next one. So they, no, the next one is Eric White and the next one.
It is one of you.
Um, yeah. The next one is on Barry, that he has now. That's a lot of me. Yeah. My question is walking in a field where you get some good stuff going on up there right now with an act deal. Hundreds of thousands of dollars being spent.
You won't, you won't.
And the last thing you need to do is have competition show up. It's nice to have it, but you don't, the first one isn't in place yet.
Don't we talk about that? I don't believe this was.
I would doubt it. Ron's not going to go into that business at all. Same as the electric distribution business, a big stretch, hoping to do an act deal.
Because we definitely don't want anybody to say that.
I don't know what he wants to do. I've seen you on a thought he was still dying.
Any other questions? Don't have an airtime motion. You got it. San, Richard, second to, if you, to transfer the lease agreement to Bravo, Bravo LLC and members. No other discussion on the favor? Five zero, Rocky? Okay, and the item six is number seven, fuel RFP discussion slash possible acceptance.
Okay. So send out the agenda in, it's all with the usual submitted the RFPs and they're recommending that, no, we're not doing it right now because it could be so volatile. And best advice was, I wouldn't do it right now. We still, we still have the contract until the end of June. And, but the advice was, it's up to us. We, but spoke to some, one of them last week and in the cap price, and then we did this morning, and that cap changed seventy-one percent, seventy-one cents or not. And it's very volatile. We recommend you hold because he can't sustain this for a long, long time. So need discussion on that. He said it's up to us. You know, he's not, he's the video.
Is that the first, the end of the channel?
The end of June.
I mean, what does that do to the budget, so to speak?
Well, the cap price, what the cap price what was given to us for the budget. So now that price was up seventy-one cents. Actually, that was yesterday. So and the bid, the quote, only got the thirty minutes. Seriously. I mean, that's, that's how volatile it is.
I think we got to trust the guys that do this for a living.
Well, that's my, that's my appeal. I didn't wait until June and go that, I understand your concern, but it's just my concern. You know? It's a bunch of you just, just, he said it's out of control and there's no way that Americans, Americans can sustain this. There's no way.
Okay.
So discussion.
All right. So is there any other discussion, questions from minds or anything that we, it sounds like we have a lot of options. Well, I agree with Richard. We're going to trust the people that know the business.
And that must be what half of them spend their day doing, talking about this.
Yeah.
Talking about fuel futures and everything else, you know, so they're going to have some sort of better grass than I would about it.
Last week I spoke to, to one of them and he said that when he called me first thing in the morning, this, this was a price. When I called him back, it was, it was, it dropped four cents and before we hung up, it went up ten cents. It was less than five minutes. Just
This is the thing. Any other discussion? So I'm not sure that we need a motion at this point. It's discussion only, informational only. And that it bears watching. Our contract, our current contract is due until our budget year end, which is the end of June. Hopefully we'll have a little more predictability at that point. If not, I mean, we are going to have to, we'll get some budget numbers for our budget this year with, you know, set your cameras and have it as a working note. Hopefully we won't be right in bearings. Any other discussion on that? Management report, what?
I'm very confused. I just want to pass on. Last week, our Public Safety Officer, Chief Murray, started the safety training, required safety training for risk management and the Department of Labor. He started off here, the town office, and there's an exception of one. And the library is next on the list. The next place, the mail box, the library will be all trained up. Took about two and a half hours to train. So we had volunteers stay in the, in the office and making service. Home Works, if you've noticed, they have started the winter sand cleaning up and throughout the town sidewalks and streets and roads that you can get all up.
When's the state plan on doing that?
I don't know. I spoke to the local state supervisor and let him know that we're planning on striking. I don't know, I spoke to the local state, um, supervisor and let him know that we're planning on, uh, striking. Saturday or last week or this month. So he says, as soon as he gets up in Japan, Japan is done, then it will come this way. Hopefully we don't have to rush off from parking spots and get the striking down or postpone it, because I have a goal to get it done by Monday weekend. So, I mean, I asked several questions about posters coming down, so that's another topic we have to, I have to think about and talk with the D O P as well.
Oh, wrote the post.
Um, this past Monday, uh, public works also, they put in all the docs, with the exception of downtown. Docs, uh, Wilson Pond, Sawyer Pond and the Junction Wharf. The docs will win, um, we're hoping we can get the downtown. Park in the afternoon mix. So we're, we're three weeks early into that. So the weather was conducive, the ice is non-tolling, so they felt like good opportunity to take care. And they did. Uh, today, um, I went to the, I attended the groundbreaking ceremony for the new hospitals that day. For that, uh, Channel Seven, Box twenty-two news from Ben or Ben over here. Maybe even Beth and I, they wanted to know what we had for projects that were going on in town, so. Advantage of the, of the news and. Showed them the Red Cross speech project, 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 and explained that a little bit, and also mentioned the public safety building project. So that's some, that's some news time there, hopefully, so public can see that. More information. Um, and after the hospital groundbreaking ceremony. Um, we had, um, Ed Smith from Senate King's Office and Carol Leacock from Senate. Kong's Office, they, they joined me myself and the treaties, uh, at the fire station with Chief Murray, and had a nice tour. It was very enlightening, I'll say, very eye-opening to them. And they said the pictures that, that John had sent them didn't do the justice that seeing in person. They were very. Not impressed, how's that? They were, they were, yes, uh, very adamant in how this station needs to be replaced. And I think I mentioned several times, it was a good project. They should, they stopped short of saying, you know, we're bored, they can't do that, right, so. They had a good, good examples of our aged. And after, after that, I came over to the police department and Jim Officer Carr, and I did the same thing, showing him, um, our four, our four hundred square foot. Police department and showed them where we do all the bookings and the fingerprinting and where we look at the confiscated drugs and such. And they were like, yeah, I know, so, and we're again. Saying that this, this project is, is a very good project for this, for this congressional spending. So, um, I'd left a, um. Great thing, Mr. Mike, you know, John, you too?
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, they showed a great enthusiasm, and they have to finalize their choices, I think, tomorrow.
Yes.
I don't think they would have invested the time if we were out out of the running today, and they were enthusiastic. Sawyer and Jim did a terrific job, so I mean, there's nothing better than putting two authentic people in front of them, and, you know, they just, uh. Uh, the firehouse was, was really, uh, you know, an eye-opener for them, they've seen plenty of firehouses, but this. This one really, uh, i- is in need of total renovation, so. Yeah, they spent how many hours with us, at least two hours, two hours with us after the groundbreaking and, uh. Yeah, they were very, it's some positive, overall positive.
Good start. Uh, in your packets, you have a copy of an email from the main department of transportation. You're a noble. Year, Tim saying, you're buying the aircraft, and you're getting breath tax taxes. Just for your view, um. Yeah, I see it as a future discussion at the airport comprehensive review, we start that in June, with the, you know. For advisory committee. And possibly an agenda I have in the front to continue the future. So, just, you know, I received, just out of the blue, but in this part, I took off all the other ninety emails, addresses that were on it, so. Could you have just the context of that? The excise taxes.
Oh, Mike, question on that, so this is actual law.
This is what it says.
And, and it cites the statute of numbers, et cetera. And. Okay, so it's, it, it varies as to. Uh, how this is assessed. Is that correct?
Correct, that's correct, so I, I replied to the email, asked him, how do you, how do you come up with a number for the aircraft? And he said, there's a, there's an aircraft blue book, like a charming blue book. Now, when on that site. You know, imagine the clerk having to go on that outside, you try to figure out, the paint would be updated, or the gauge would have been updated, or a moving tube would have been updated. And then on a thirty-five year old airplane. Because it been. So it says on the bottom, please contact the revenue services on assistance, on the excise taxes and collection thereof, so I contacted, uh. Joe over in town manager originally, to see what they do, and he goes, you and I are in St. Luke.
Which means?
Which means not collecting the next high taxes, so, need to figure it out.
I can speak to that a little time, yeah, not in any authoritative position, but I own an airplane. Have many, many, many years, different ones. Somewhere along the line, we always used to register our aircraft. State. When you pay, connects our staff to the state. And they had, and I could be wrong on the town, I can't remember. They had a gal who was full-time stat person for the state. Old, old character. And we deal with her, and they send you a bill, and you pay the state. And. I'm gonna say this for my own benefit. It was cheap. If you think you're gonna go make twenty-five thousand dollars up there, everybody would leave. Because it'll go to another town. My airplane, excise tax, was sixty-five dollars. Because it went from the original purchase place. So. It's interesting, and. No time. Most of them don't collect it. I think we've been down this road before, and I can't remember. It seems though, was we sent out a letter and said to everybody, you know, if you can make donations in town, we'll call us where.
So, yeah, that's, that's what happened, the lease is several years ago.
So, in this event, there's not been any punitive. Action taken by the state because?
No.
Okay.
No, but we are a N P I A S airport, which is the national plan of integrated airport systems. That means you're eligible for airport improvement funds from the F A A. And this is what it is, you, you.
And we've utilized those funds before.
F A A ones?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
But you, I just want you to read this, right, and we don't need to really fully discuss the content of it, but. If you read it, you know, it's, it's, we're not going to state anymore, they want the towns, they want the airports, they want states to be self. Self-sufficient, so this is a way to help be self-sufficient, to put the money back in the airport. And also down to the bottom is underlined, since the maximum tax is ten dollars, the minimum tax is ten dollars. So it was recommended, um, to just, to just charge a flat, a flat fee of like a hundred dollars per plane, per year. As a donation.
And that's what some of us did, I wrote a check to the town, go down here, when I gave my, I gave my other dollar, it was thirty-five more than I paid to the state. But some of the other things that got involved there, folks, is. And that's. It's a hornet's nest if you want it to be. People who come here who had camps. Or second home, and they lived in Massachusetts. Well, then pretty soon the states, maybe you ought to register your plane here. And they'd already registered in Massachusetts. And where this goes is, is, and you may see that it's very interesting, I, I'll just call it a hornet's nest. When somebody shows up with a jet. And you tell them that they ought to register it here, and it's registered in Delaware. Because it costs thirty-seven million dollars. And you tell them they're gonna register it here. Good luck. That's all I'm gonna say. I mean, things got a bit of a turmoil up there, they really truly did, it's us little guys, and, uh, we get. Between a rock and a hard place. The stuff that shows up, it's not showing up here like it doesn't by having those places, but it's coming, it's coming. Then things change. And everybody's old to get money, I, I understand it, but. This, boy, I've been waiting for this to show up again, I just have.
That, that would be my question, is what brought this about?
Just came, you just came.
Came out of the blue.
Came out of the blue.
Somebody asked a question somewhere.
Yeah.
It's, it's several on top, that's come to our attention, that some towns. In the A S airports, probably most towns. Have not been collecting aircraft excise taxes. Unfortunately, it is not main P O T's mission to enforce main record laws, this was brought up at the most recent main Aeronautical Advisory Board meeting.
So clearly, you know, our intent is to be able to, uh. When we can get the airport advisory committee together, um, we had talked last fall about, um. Having a meeting with those folks and talking about numerous issues that, that, um. Should be on the table from, from both parties, and I think this is something that obviously. We need to have a discussion with them about. You know, just, you know, sharing with them that it's. It's made its way to the top of the, uh, list again at the state level. Um, charging or. Giving the authority, I guess, to the towns to, to, uh, to look at, uh, exercising any of this. So that. Uh, discussion we can get on again for that being, so. Is there anything else anybody wants to add to that? And so.
About self-sustaining airport. Yeah, but to, you know, Steve's point, who flies in here with thirty-seven million dollar jet. And now his house up here, and his place is out of green, you know? You gotta charge him nine mils on each dollar.
All right. And then go, but the first thing they do is call their attorney.
So let's future, just wanted to give it to you guys, you can do it.
Be, be the hornet's nest. So certainly there'll be no action taken on this.
Uh, also, a good package is a problem of, uh, a letter from the Destiny, from Destination Resort, regarding the authority, you know? I was asked to, uh, make sure that you receive the copy, and we each have one, so, go ahead and look that over in the meeting. Sally tells me that she has twenty-plus kids. Signed up for T-ball or baseball, and is on baseball. And so we have two teams, which is a good thing, right, a lot of kids signed up, so it's a great thing, that, being able to have two teams, and she was. Kind of picking my brain, how do we do this, I mean, have two teams, you got enough, so.
Tell her to make sure not to have any games during the night of town meeting. Much more aggravating, you spend all this time on the budget, and you walk out and it's fifty adults sitting over there.
I've had, uh, as you know, I'm a code enforcement officer, besides name, June third, so they posted it, um, several places. Um, and I have several, so I've had several inquiries. Few applications, you know, which is starting to do, uh, the week after next, which is the week of May sixteenth, hopefully. You have enough of you. Saw a former code enforcement officer this morning, and figured out we're having a coffee, and I asked him if he wanted the application. Oh, my God.
Didn't dump us.
He was all saying that. And I, it makes for a recognized department, so. So.
Good for him.
Yes, exactly, that's all I have, you know?
Any questions for Mike about anything that he's shared with us? I understand the hospital groundbreaking was well-attended.
It was very well-attended, it was full, a full tent.
Good.
It was, it was a very large tent, and, yeah.
Good.
Very, very, very well done.
Good.
Yeah, good speakers, and a loaded history, which I thought was very interesting, I like that kind of stuff, so. It was nice.
Very good. Any questions for Mike, any else?
I might, I'll do my what's on my mind, um, right here, thinking of it, uh, any probe or company?
Uh, still working through that.
Okay.
Still working through that, not yet.
No big pickups or anything like.
Still looking through it.
Okay.
Get ready to end the election for the time again, yeah?
Okay, great. Thank you, Brock. More than that.
Okay, anything else?
First dream.
Blue Street.
Was that covered, was fixed?
Yeah, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna fix it. Um, I hope us to get either a cover back in there until we decide to fix Blue Street. Or at least get the rebels in, and when they come up to pay the streets covered, all of here. Think they're well aware.
If you're. First thing, anything?
Any else? All right, number of comment, period, and. Comments? John, uniforms arrived?
Oh, yeah.
Not yet. Soon.
It should be.
Okay.
Yes, I wanted to let you know that, uh, the lighting at Cracks Landing was put in place, uh, yesterday. Uh, the pandemic supply chain issues impacted the polls last fall. So they're proceeding until January, but they couldn't fly yesterday. We still need to time it, just shut them off at night with a switch, which is nice, huh? So they, they will install that and they'll get that going. Um, as soon as the doctor, which we are put back in, which will happen this week or next week, um, we will have the picnic benches, uh. memory benches and a bike rack installed at the park, so, it'll be something nice, uh, there's a group of young kids that every, um. Every afternoon will come to the park with their bikes, kind of put them on the ground, and they always ask, would you? They're promising we have a bike rack, so we have a bike rack, it is, it has come, and we'll have that in soon, so that'll be a nice addition. And then at the grand opening, we've got a couple of donations for brilliant flowers, and, um. Mother Kennedy is, uh, we're working this, her, her scout, to, to help, help us. This way, so, um, so the park will be getting into shape quickly, we're excited.
Good, have you turned the lights on over there?
And we turned them on yesterday. Yeah, and we, uh, we absolutely, you know, talked with, with Jenny to make sure that they were compliant with the dark sky, they, they look very much like this. Looks like the ball should be there, but the light is in this part, and it's, it's putting down.
Are they on all night?
I, you know.
They are, they are now, we're getting the timer, shutting off at eleven.
Yeah. I wasn't, I wasn't gonna say the black until we get the time.
Did you know that, John, you didn't do that?
I woke up at twelve o'clock, and I said, I hope she doesn't turn off the lights.
All right, any other public comment? Um. Anybody from Zune, Esther? Hello? Steve?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Okay. All right, what's on your mind?
Picnic tables down at Creo, I know they were taken out last year, was it last year they were taken out? Were, were any of them put back down in man?
Yeah, if you have one, there's something to pay. Yeah, if you have one that someone's painting, you sell it where there's all the dog cheese, there are all the public works trying to paint it. So we should have.
It's a nice private little spot people like to go to.
Bert?
I'm good.
All right, do you remind, remind us when town meeting is again?
I keep forgetting.
Juice.
You?
Me testing you.
You get, you get a short term disease, do you?
No, not really. I haven't started calculating yet. June sixth.
June sixth and elections are?
The fourteen.
Okay. Just so everybody knows.
Just so you know on the elections. Because we only have the two boards. There's no sanitary district this year. It's just selectmen and school board. But we have the school validation this year, the two, the two questions this year. The one on the budget, if they approve the budget. And the second one is if they want to continue this the next three years. Remember, that's a referendum question. So this is the year for that one as well. So plus we also have primaries going on on the fourteen or county stuff going on. So. You know, it is, be a busy day.
Yeah, thank you. All right, any else under, what's on your mind? Okay. We have business before we talk about. The executive session. Here and then, we will move to executive session.